Okay, this is a meeting of the Hyde Park Central School District's Board of Education on...
January 9th.
January 9th of 2019. Can I have a motion to enter into executive session to discuss...
What?
Twenty.
Twenty.
Twenty. I read right exactly what it is, hey. Okay, corrected.
Sorry.
Can I have a motion to enter into executive session to discuss the employment of a particular person or corporation and collective negotiations pursuant to Article 14 of the Civil Service Law?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? We're now in the executive session. So, welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District's Board of Education meeting here at Ralph R. Smith. This is January 9th of 2020. And can we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
So there is no agenda modifications? Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
Hold it.
Second.
You pick. All those in favor? Motion carries. So, next week on January 15th, on Wednesday, there's the Prisms Concert at FDR High School. On Thursday, January 16th, is North Park Elementary's Winter Concert, also at FDR High School at 7:00 PM. On Tuesday, January 21st, that's Ralph R. Smith's Winter Concert, also at FDR High School at 7:00 PM. And on Wednesday, January 22nd, the Hyde Park Education Foundation Meeting will be at the District Office, that's at 10:00 AM. The next Board of Ed Meeting will be Thursday on January 23rd, that will also be at the District Office at 7 o'clock PM. And on to Pride.
All right, so for this week's Pride, I want to focus on Ralph R. And they've actually been up to a lot recently. So from the fall into the winter season, Ralph R. has been giving back to the community. They did a Veterans Day toiletry and card collection. They also participated in the Claudio Cares Food Drive, gathering over 600 items to be donated. And in December, they did a Toys for Tots Drive. And finally, a Caps for Kids Drive, which collected $250 to be donated to children that are battling cancer. This year is also the school's second year of doing quarterly challenges, where the Principal, Mrs. Lawson, reads a story to each class and afterwards asks them to create some artwork that kind of symbolizes what they read. Mrs. Lawson was amazed by the artwork, and the second challenge will be displayed at the STEM Fair on February 2nd, I think it's February 4th though, actually. And then something else the school is very proud of is they are installing a fitness trail, which will, that will be happening in the spring. And they fundraised and received donations to help create this kind of interactive trail on the playground for the kids to use that will include yoga, calisthenics, and conflict resolution pass. And finally, on January 31st, Ralph R. will have their Quarter Two Awards Assembly, in which, in which each classroom teacher recognizes an owl star and bucket filler. Now, an owl star is someone that shows the qualities of an outstanding, wonderful learner, and that's owl, which in the words of Mrs. Lawson means that they always strive for excellent and never give up, even when something is challenging. And a bucket filler is someone who shows kindness, is an excellent role model for their peers, so that's really amazing. And then as for FDR, two senior students, my classmates and peers, Cameron Johnson and Matt Sweet, won the Congressional App Challenge. Now, this challenge is sponsored by members of the House of Representatives and is meant to help middle and high school students learn how to code and become kind of inspired by it. The students make their own idea a tangible reality and create an app all on their own. And up next for Johnson and Sweet is Washington DC, where they're going to meet Congressman Delgado and kind of show their app to other politicians there. And I just wanted to congratulate them because this is an amazing feat. And also, our school's basketball team has had an extremely eventful week, winning two out of three of their games since this Sunday. On Sunday, they lost by 10 to Cornwall, but the team's captain Jake London said that the team didn't, they just didn't play like they knew he could, but they took that and they won the next two games. So on Tuesday, they played Highland and they beat them by 25 points. And then yesterday night, they played against Sawgerties, and they won 73 to 37. So we beat them by 36 points, and that's amazing. And there's another game tomorrow night at 5:30 PM, and it's kind of an important game because we're tied with New Paltz in the division right now. So although this doesn't decide if we're going to Mahal's, it's going to be a factor that plays into it. So they just want, you know, some support if any of you guys want to come out for that, so.
Any more Pride?
Yes, I attended the Netherwood Concert last night, and it was well-received. I especially liked the strings orchestra, I thought they were outstanding. That lady, that's a treasure. We got to keep her. It was very good, it was, everybody was well behaved, considering there were five other events going on at the same time. It was hard to park and there was a lot of thing, but the kids knew where to go, when to come back. And I especially liked the fact that the kids came and listened to their friends. When they weren't on the stage, they were in the audience, and I think that's terrific. So, nice done.
I just have, small, but big. So the Katie Philiberty Gymnastics Invitational was on December 21st. It's always a well-attended event. This year, they broke their record for fundraising. They raised $5,200, that's the highest amount they've ever raised during that invitational. It was just a wonderful invitational, always a little emotional too, but the girls did an excellent job, and it's a really well-run event. Rachel alluded to the Claudio, not alluded, she spoke to, the Claudio Cares Can Drive, and we got some positive press in two different newspapers. This is a picture of the student government. And some of the articles were even fleshed out a little bit more, saying what Claudio Cares Foundation does in addition to the Can Drive and how they help all school districts in Duchess County, not just Hyde Park. They make donations pretty much to all the other districts as well. We also received some positive press about Project Fala, that's a partnership with the community, with especially the Historical Society and the district. It is still going strong, so the community puts together tins of cookies, and our students put together cards and ornaments and decorations, and then it all gets shipped to one package together, and each year, and it gets sent to the USS Roosevelt, and they are at dock in Florida. And what's nice is they always send a lot of pictures back, and you can see pictures of them opening up the ornaments and reading the cards that were designed by students, as well as opening up the tins of cookies. So it's a well-oiled machine. We go through our directors and say it's Project Fala time, and magically on the day, and Jay helps a lot coordinate and get all the stuff in. It gets boxed up and sent down to our adopted ship of the district, the USS Roosevelt. So it's nice to see some positive press of our students' involvement in giving back to our servicemen, as well as our community, so.
Jeff, I just, there's one other thing I'd like to mention. Last, well, I guess it was just before the Christmas break, was the opening of the food pantry at the Violet Avenue. It's an extension of the group from Reinbeck. We hope to have new shelving and stuff in there. Currently, it's open one day a month, but they're hoping to increase that as people find out that it's actually there. They had probably 12, 15 families come in that night, and I think it's a terrific thing, and I'm hoping that it'll expand.
And it's all volunteer work, yeah.
Any more Pride? Okay, on to Superintendent's Report.
Yeah, speaking of the Hyde Park Historical Society, they are having their annual Hat, Mittens, Scarf Drive. It is solely for the purpose of donating it to our school district. I love their thinking. It's around this time of the year in general that students wind up with one mittens, a lost hat, know this, know that, so it's a way to refresh for students who need any hats, mittens, scarves, winter stuff. And they run the whole collection effort and then work with our nurses to make the donations. So if you would like to donate, that's through the Hyde Park Historical Society, and we really appreciate them running this drive every year, and we appreciate that it comes not at the beginning of the year, because the need is greater once they start to lose all of their items. And the student government at Haviland Middle School is doing an Operation Valentine's Day for our troops. They are collecting, there's a flyer, you can get it in Haviland or probably on the website, but it's, they send all these items to troops, whether it's, you know, certain types of food items, pencils, pens, chapstick, black socks, hand warmers, you know, deck of cards, handheld games, batteries, and cards and letters are always welcome, so that's the Haviland Middle School Student Government organizing that. And donations are due, the final day of collection will be Monday, February 3rd. And then before we meet again, we will have a day off for Martin Luther King Jr. And there are several activities planned throughout the school, and some coordinated and some just individual instruction. And it's not just for the day, it's Black History Month, for example, I was meeting with Mr. Shaw today, and they have a quote of the day, and during all of February, it's an inspirational quote from an African-American author, so we will be gearing up for that, and you should see signs of that on our website and Facebook.
Okay, thank you. So now we'll have a presentation from Ralph R. Smith, from Principal Lawson.
Thank you for coming. To all of the Ralph R. Smith staff who are present, and we're really excited to talk about some of the things that are happening at Ralph R. Smith. So let's see. There we go. The picture is from World Kindness Day. All of our students wore cardigans and in honor of Mr. Rogers, and we took a picture out on the lawn in the shape of a heart. You can't see many of their cardigans because it was a very chilly day, so they're covered up with coats, but we all love the message that World Kindness Day sends, and Ralph R. Smith focuses on the message of kindness through our Olveus Prevention, Bully Prevention Program, and also Read Alouds that are dedicated to that theme. So our mission and vision and motto are listed here. They're directly aligned with the district mission and vision statement. They were created by our BLT, and we revisit them often. You heard Rachel talk about our awards assemblies, where we recognize owl stars and bucket fillers, which again, just goes towards kindness and striving for excellence. So Ralph R. Smith by the numbers. This year, we have 377 students. That's a slight decrease from last year. Last year, we hovered around 385. Our class sections, we have 18 class sections. Our free and reduced lunch rate is at 60%. That's a slight increase this year. And our students with disabilities are at 21%. That's rather high, but we house the special class program for the district, so we have four 12-on-1 classrooms here, and we also have ICT, Integrated Co-teaching, at every grade level. Our ethnicity is also broken out here. So moving right into our data, this, we're seeing a trend of less and less opt-outs every year. I fully anticipate that the cohort that moved on to Haviland had the highest opt-out rate last year of 43% for ELA and 45% for math. I anticipate we'll see numbers drop pretty significantly this year. It seems like that trend has moved on. So you'll see, at third grade last year, we had 8% and 12% opt-out rates. However, I will say that at fifth grade, due to the high number of opt-outs, it does impact the scores and the data that we will look at, because almost half of our kids didn't take that test. So our ELA data, we saw some nice growth in some areas. Third grade is really doing well, they're really, we as a building have spent a lot of time studying the data and working with the data, not only with the state test scores, but with MAPS as well. This year in particular, we're spending a lot of time setting goals with students based on the MAPS data. Jen Kreiserini and Kim Nizel were in the building this morning, leading a PD on using MAPS Skills, which is a progress monitoring tool that's associated with the MAPS testing. So as you can see, our fourth grade number jumped quite a bit, we had some nice growth there. And fifth grade, again, because of the opt-outs, you know, it's hard to measure true growth there. But we're at 26% total threes and fours for ELA. In math, we continue to see some nice growth in third grade, and we saw some growth in fourth grade as well, and again, in fifth grade with the high number of opt-outs, it's hard to get a true sense. But we're hovering at about 29% for math. Oops, in science, we're at 72% proficient in science, and our opt-outs were not that big in fourth grade science. Our MAPS scores, which is our state-approved SLO for our teachers, are listed here. Overall, we had a rating of effective, and we did see some nice growth cohort to cohort in our MAPS data. From first to second grade, we had a nice jump. From second to third grade, in both ELA and math, cohort to cohort, we had a nice jump, and we're highly effective in math in third grade. And we also had some nice growth from fourth to fifth grade. So this is the data that we're using on a regular basis. We're coming up on a mid-year MAPS test assessment window, so all of our teachers will be administering that assessment and using that data to set goals with students directly. So that will be coming up this month. Oops. As far as improvement initiatives go, we, as a district, have set some goals around improvement, and we're working through those as an administrative team. But also, in this building, we've identified priority standards for ELA and math based on the test scores, and we're using data protocols to identify what our areas of focus should be. We have targeted PD each month with directors and with me. Every one of our faculty meetings has a data focus to it, and we are really diving deeper into the data and what we need to do in the classroom to impact growth. We're implementing a unit of study for testing as a genre. We've done that for a few years with ELA. This year, we're adding math into that, so we're really focusing on the testing language in math and how that might be different from the math language that students hear every day in the classroom. We also are focusing, again, on goal-setting with students using the MAPS data, and I have been focusing with parents on three themes this year. We talked about it at Meet the Staff Night, it's mentioned in all of our newsletters, and those three themes are attendance matter, literacy matters, and parent involvement matters. And we're really trying to share with parents the data on our attendance and how that impacts students when you miss more than two days a month. And getting them involved and reading with their children on a regular basis is so very important. I've talked about our One Book One School Initiative before, and that is directly related to the entire school community reading one book and celebrating that, and that's coming up this spring as well. We're also implementing the Phonics Program across the district in grades K through 2. This building has really embraced that work, and we have grade-level teams that are meeting regularly to dive deeper into this new curriculum and implement it with fidelity. And we continue to focus on critical thinking, which is a DLT goal. Technology integration is something that is embraced in this building. I can't say enough how much I appreciate Sharon Foster, our librarian, who's here tonight. She leads this effort in classrooms every day and does some amazing things with kids. So she and I are brainstorming about the next Principals Challenge, which you heard Rachel talk about, and that challenge will take place at the STEM Fair at Ralph R. Smith, and it will have a programming challenge. So we'll be using these little cool robots called Ozobots, and kids will be challenged to program them. So you heard Rachel talk about, the last Principals Challenge was focused on art, this one is more about technology, so we tried to balance that.
Date for that one, the Principals Challenge?
So it's February 4th.
February 4th.
Mm-hmm. We do a lot of work with our tech integrators in the classrooms. We have Maker Space in the library, we use breakout boxes, we do digital citizenship lessons, Scratch Junior for coding, programming. There's a lot going on in addition to the use of our interactive screens. I feel like we've moved beyond that and really are focusing on things that are motivating and engaging for kids, but also enhance our curriculum. So this year, we have an emphasis on kindness. We, at the beginning of the year, I went to every classroom, read a book about kindness. We reward kids for kind acts. We actually have a positive behavioral referral system here, where kids are recognized for being kind, and teachers write it up and they get to come and celebrate with me, and they get a special sticker, and they're really excited about that. One of our teachers has implemented breakfast with books, where we invite families to come in, and teachers sign up for time slots to read to families as they're eating their breakfast. It's a really nice way to get families in in the morning, because evenings don't always work for everybody. We have started a kindergarten and fourth grade buddy system, so our fourth graders are mentors to our kindergartners, and it's amazing to watch those fourth graders take on that role and feel so proud of themselves. We always have a student expo in May, and that is a time for us to celebrate learning. So every child has at least one piece that they've selected to present at the student expo, and families are invited to come and celebrate that work. And it is our best-attended event of the year, more so than parent-teacher conferences, more so than concerts. It's amazing. And we always have kindergarten story hour over the summer. I invite families in. It's a great way for them to have a positive first connection with school. You heard Rachel talk about our fitness trail. We're really excited to get that up and going in the spring. We have to paint directly on the blacktop, so we can't do it until springtime, but we ordered these templates that will help kids work through conflict resolution out on the playground, but also have some fun, engaging activities. We also celebrate Read Aloud Day and quarterly awards assemblies, and the PTA here is phenomenal. Our PTA has at least one event every month. We just had our Ice Cream Social, our Back to School Ice Cream Social on Tuesday, and we're getting ready for our play. So the play this year will be Harry Potter. The kids are really excited, so you'll hear more about that as it gets closer. Our BLT goals are, one is a continuation of the Principals Challenges and developing engaging tasks for families to take part in, and the other is around supporting the idea of one of my themes for the year around family literacy. So we are working on some new initiatives, such as guest readers for students' birthdays. So when students celebrate their birthdays at elementary, families come in. As part of that, we ask one family member to be a special guest reader on that day. The other thing we're starting is an I-read, hashtag I-read, and ask families to send in pictures of them reading at home as a family, and those will be displayed this spring around the building. We work with the community often, and here's a list of some of the things that we've done. You heard Rachel talk a lot about our school giving back in many ways this fall. We have a backpack program for students in need, and we provide food every weekend for several families. We have Fire Safety Day, and our Hyde Park Police Department is visible in the building, just building connections that are positive with kids. And we... And we have the most amazing foster grandparents in our building. We have three foster grandparents who come pretty much every day. And they help out in kindergarten classrooms and they're just amazing. So... And here is a group of four kids building a snowman on one of our snowy days this winter. And it was actually a lesson on following multi-step directions. So, we're trying to even incorporate learning into our play. So, any questions?
Nope. Okay. I'm looking forward to seeing how getting parents involved in reading does when...
Yeah.
In the spring, we'll have all the DLT. So, I'm looking forward to seeing how that comes out.
Great. I'll share a funny story just as I finish up. We had a 2nd grade student today sharing with his teacher, he's researching frogs from the Amazon. And he said to his teacher, "They're from the Amazon. There's two different kinds of Amazon. There's Amazon Prime and the Amazon Rainforest." So, just a funny little aside story. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you, Melissa.
Melissa. I do have to say that, first of all, Sharon is here. Thank you. The technology is unbelievable here because of your presence and your instruction. And I also want to give Melissa a shout-out. When she started the Principal Challenges last year, she exponentially grew the amount of families that are coming into the school. It's quadrupled since you started that. The Principal Challenges are really well-attended, so...
Okay. Up next is the Technology Budget Consideration by Rick Ward.
Sounds like good things.
Yep. And the scores starting to go up as the opt-out rate goes down.
Oh, a little too fast. Okay. So, one of the board goals for this year is up there on the board, and this is what the presentation focuses on. I understand you want to look at smart bond spending, projection of budgetary impact based on state ed requirements, cybersecurity, and data privacy. The first one's the easiest to take care of. The smart bond is pretty cut and dried. The second one, the cybersecurity, is it's a big issue. And we're going to talk about it. We're trying to minimize the impact as best we can through what we have currently. There are some things we do need to consider down the road. So, first, we need a new clicker because this one's going too fast. But District Technology Budget is no review. We have a couple of funding sources that we use, District Budget being the largest portion of that. That includes our BOSIs and RIC co-serves. The RIC co-serves are mainly the software, e-school data, Envision, the big management programs that we use. And then BOSIs supplies some equipment, mainly a lot of services, technical support, items like that. E-Rate is a great opportunity for us. It's a funding consortium from the telecoms. They, basically, have been buying networking equipment through that, switches, server closets, server racks, things like that. They cover 80% of the cost. We pay 20%. So, by using E-Rate, I've been able to leverage some of the pricing. And I've been able to get some really good equipment that would otherwise hit us pretty hard as for, you know, switches, a couple thousand dollars. We can get it for a fraction of them. The Smart Schools Bond Act, we'll go over in a second. And all those things, the equipment, the software and subscriptions are contractual or paying vendors to come in and help us out with some major projects and, of course, our supplies. Again, it's going to be tricky. All right. So, Smart Schools Bond Act, as you know, a couple of years ago, the state afforded the district, this district, $2.6 million. We've done two rounds of spending so far. The first round, we purchased a number of Chromebooks, the interactive displays, like the one you see here. And we were fortunate to provide an interactive display in every instructional space throughout the district. So, as opposed to phasing in kindergarten this year, then 1st grade the next year, we just got everybody done, put everyone in an equal playing field. And I think that's really brought up the use of these machines. So, no one's had to go without for a couple of years. The Chromebooks, we went one-to-one. That was committee work that started before I began. It really focused at the middle school. So, haven't really adopted it well. They've taken it on, they've done well with it. FDR filed it a year later. The elementary's always had some level of cards. We've increased the number of cards at the elementary levels because of the funding that was available to us. And you can see the breakdown of what we've been spending over that time. And, of course, document cameras, cases for the Chromebooks, all those pieces that go along with it. And then on the bottom, the second round that we just, we're actually in the midst of finishing up right now, our security camera system around the district. The cameras are really good. The network is robust. The server capacity was not so much. We were getting down to about a week or two of available storage, which is not enough time in our world. And in order to keep just that, we had to dumb down cameras, lower the resolution. We had to turn some off from recording. So, through the smart bond, we were able to buy actually less than $173,000. For $151,172, we purchased a video storage array. And it is actually set to be able to record all 300 of our cameras at maximum resolution and store 60 days of recording time. You may ask why I went that high. It's because as we replace a camera, we're replacing a 1-megapixel camera with a 5-megapixel camera. So, by adding that extra room, I don't have to come back another year and say, "I need more storage." We're good for a couple of years now. So, we're actually in the midst of rolling out that new surveillance system. We've been working on exposing the staff to the new software. And then in about 2, 3 weeks, we'll actually start moving the cameras into the new system and then it will go live. So, the smart bond has been a phenomenal boon to allowing our technology department to grow. So, that's the Bond Act. The second part of what you asked me about was the threat landscape that we're in. And when Manuel Woodbury took the hit this past summer, the opening day when their entire staff was in the opening day presentation with the superintendent. As the superintendent was speaking, their tech director was watching notices come up about their server, that files were getting encrypted. Files were getting encrypted. And he said, "This isn't right." They looked, they realized they were getting hit with ransomware. He pulled the plug, tapped the superintendent on the shoulder, who was in the middle of a Google Slides presentation, so effectively cut the superintendent off. And for the next 3 months, their district was pretty much without technology. They couldn't use a desktop, anything. Their network was down, everything was down. In order to do any kind of work like Envision, where Linda lives on a day-to-day basis, they actually had to go to Orange Old Street BOSIs and be set up on special computers. They couldn't turn anything on for fear of reactivating the ransomware. So, and the cost, a couple hundred thousand dollars, lots of consultants, Homeland Security, everyone coming in and helping them. We don't want to be that school. Nobody does. But the reality is, there are a lot of people out there. They're not doing it for the money necessarily. They're doing it to disrupt society. They're looking to disrupt how we work. So, what we have to do is look at what the threat landscape on. I thought this chart on the right was interesting because you can look at what the kinds of attacks are. The third bar from the right, you see that big blue section about towards the top? Those are the phishing scams. That's where you get the email that says, "Click here and enter your social security number and you can win a free trip to Honolulu." Those kinds of silly things, you all go, "Yeah, whatever." They're getting better. The spear phishing, where they actually target you with an email from Greer Reichich, and it looks like an email from Greer, that says, "I need a fund transfer immediately. Please enter the following transfer codes." They're getting more adept and more adept. You'll notice that bar has actually shrunk in the last 2 years. It's still hitting the schools quite a bit, but now they're looking at server vulnerabilities. So, are our servers patched? Are they where they need to be? Is the security where it needs to be? What this comes down to, it's a moving target. So, a couple of years ago was denial of service attacks. That's where they flood your network requests and bog you down. That's not happening so much anymore, but we have a piece of equipment in place to deal with that. Now, it's phishing. Next year, it will be something else. It's a moving target. So, when you ask me, "What can we do to prepare for cybersecurity?", it's a big question because it will always be a moving target. Our plan right now, and believe me, we've been to numerous workshops, I've seen some familiar faces at these workshops too, keep everything up to date. So, we're patching our servers. Chance Caswell this weekend will be spending Saturday, patching all of our servers, making sure all the software is up to date. Our user lists, one of the frightening things I've found is sometimes people retire, leave the district, yet they still have an active account. Making sure, keeping our user list up to date, our equipment inventory up to date, our software up to date, all those things. Airgap to backups, I am going to mention that. There's about a $22,000-$25,000 cost. We already have backups at BOSIs. They back up all of our servers for us, which is great. All of our Google information is backed up in the cloud. BOSIs stuff is great, but if they get hit, we have only our in-district resources or nothing. So, what we want to do is actually have another layer. Airgap just means there's a space between our information and that backup. There's time and space. For $25,000, we can have a backup system in district that will have us that extra layer of protection, just one more layer. An ongoing audit assistance in practice. We had a kickoff meeting yesterday. We're going to be spending some money to do a threat hunting assessment, I'll talk about in a minute. Developing our plans for incident response, disaster recovery, and data security. What does that mean? I mean, I went back to my principal days, right? It's, what do we do in the case of a fire? What do you do in case of a lockdown? What do you do in case of, you know, a hold-in-place? In cyber world, tech world, we're not really there yet. We need to create those kinds of plans. There's all sorts of templates, and that's what my team has been working on. Training for staff around phishing scams. Greer has really been beating me up about where is our phishing scam training? And I've been trying to get some pricing together. And today, I stumbled across a great one that Cisco actually uses, CoreBTS, called "Co-Fence," which we're looking into. It might actually be free, which is one of the best words in the world. So, what that means, it will actually send out a phishing email to our staff and see who clicks. And then there's training that follows that, so people don't fall prey to these scams.
And I'll just chime in, that we'll be training before it goes out as well. So, before we ever utilize the phishing software, every staff member will be informed that we have it. This is what it looks like. This is what will happen if you get hooked. Because basically, if somebody responds to a phishing inquiry, there's a report generated and we use it as a learning opportunity to tell people this is what happened when you click on something you're not supposed to click on. But there'll be a lot of warning, not necessarily training, but everybody will be warned when we get it and what it will look like and...
It's not about catching anybody being bad, it's just about trying to educate them.
To let them know the poles are in the water now.
Yeah, exactly. Keep everybody safe and increase security measures.
Yummy bait.
All right. Okay. Budgetary considerations for state initiatives. So, this was a challenging one for me. The ones that I was really focusing in, the online testing's been around for a couple of years now. There's a focus for the state that we move away from paper and pencil tests. We're still in that voluntary stage. We all anticipate that someday it's going to be, you will do computer-based testing. They're investing a lot of money in this. They have a purpose and end goal in mind. So, in order to do that, now, you don't need to have a wireless network. You could have just desktop computers, but you need enough to do a grade level or, dare I say, a building at a time. That's a lot of devices. My recommendation is we keep our wireless network up to control and we keep our Chromebook device fleet up to speed. The wireless network, I want to say it was 5, 6 years ago. There was an investment of $1.2 million by the Board of Education to put in those little boxes up there with that nice blue light all throughout the district. It is a great, robust network. Network manufacturers are very smart in that they build them end-of-life. And in 2022, our wireless controller and all of our access points come end-of-life. What does that mean? They don't stop working. It just means they don't supply patches for them anymore. So, they become vulnerable to security issues, which is not a good idea if we go back to this. So, my recommendation, in last year's budget presentation, I showed the 5-year plan. This is already part of that 5-year plan. We anticipated this cost. The other nice part is I can, again, maximize the E-Rate funding to cover some of these really scary prices. It's now not another $1.2 million. It's $2.75 for the wireless access controller and the access points. The rest of that price that you spent was all about the infrastructure, the network switches, the ports, and all those things. So, it's a chunk of money, but I think based in light of all the emerging trends in education, the online testing, and what we have going with our educational system now with the Chromebooks and the learning that's going on, it's something we need to keep going. There is a cost coming up in the next 2 years that we really can't avoid. It's something that's preventative maintenance. We have to stay on top of it. The next one is also really interesting, the Data Privacy Officer. There is a requirement that districts by July, appoint a data privacy officer. That doesn't mean it has to be a new person or a new body. It's a task. They've been pretty clear, thankfully, that they feel to conflict of interest, the tech director is not the data privacy officer, which means we have to find somebody to take on that, it's a significant responsibility. The data work, I'll show you in just a moment, has increased exponentially, the amount of data that schools are required to report to the state. There may be a task, a cost associated with that, depending on how we view that position and the work that they take on. ED Law 2D is a very big one, person identifiable information. It's protecting our student data, our adult data, anything that you can bring back to a person, identify who they are, all those pieces. A lot of it is about training for staff, dedicating the time to actually say to the staff, "Do not put student names in emails. Stop it. Use a student ID number." When you're talking to parents, you're not showing the entire class list, things like that. So, a lot of it's just training. The second piece is software compliance. We're having a lot of great requests about, "This is a great software program. Can we just use it with my students, please? It's only $10 apiece." The problem is when you look at those software pieces, they often collect data that they're then selling. They're selling our student information because it's great marketing stuff. We're doing our job. I look at every software title that's requested for SIPA, COPA, FIBA, HIPAA, all those wonderful acronyms to make sure they're saying, they're doing what they should be doing. But in the end, there's going to be a cost associated because the free software, which is great, that everybody loves, it's free for a reason. It's free because it's a data mine. So, all that free stuff that people are using, especially those click-through programs, they're really not the best way to go. We may need to look at purchasing more software in order to take care of those free programs that we really don't want to mess with anymore. The whitelist-only environment would be that the only software allow our staff to use and our students to use will be stuff that we let through on our servers. It's really probably the safest way to go because you then avoid all the nonsense of the bloatware, adware, malware, spamware, all the wares that are out there. Data security, so again, the backup, $22,000. We would only be doing our most critical information. A lot of our information is stored elsewhere. It's stored at the RIC, it's stored on the cloud with Google. But there's still information here in district that we would want to back up as well for fairly small cost. And this is actually buying a device. So, this is a big cost one time and then a small subscription fee to something called Veen. We would be a little bit safer. It's just another layer of protection. State data reporting, the RIC contacted us in the fall. The Regional Information Center houses all of our data, does all our data reporting to us. They noted in the last 10 years, they have gone from 77 data elements to report to the state to over 850, and it grows every day. It's a lot, we actually pay someone, Karen Bartash, who is a genius at the RIC, to take all of our data, put it together into all these state reports and send it out. They're not able to keep up with the workload that comes of them, so they're cutting back on their services, which means more data work comes back to the district. Sharon Hare, who is a genius and is an amazing student records assistant and does so much data work already, and myself, and Joan Powers, and Jean Cody, we're all doing the best we can to keep up with the data, but it is overwhelming, quite honestly. So, my request is what's called, it's a hyper-data security position. We're taking a salary of up to $60,000. We looked at the existing civil service titles in Dutchess County. Such a thing doesn't exist. Joanne Kraus at Arlington is also looking at something similar. She's going with a title called Infrastructure Specialist, but that's focused on the network security side of things. We're looking for someone who can look at not just the security elements of student data safety, disaster recovery plans, all the inventories and all that stuff, but also doing the data-related tasks of running reports, getting them to the state. The Civil Rights Data Collection Report is coming up again. The RIC will not help us this year with that. It's an every-other, yeah, that's an every-other report that has to be done. We're on our own for it this time. It is a monumental task. So, that is the draft Data Privacy Officer position segment I worked on with Elliot Garcia. We've submitted it on a required form to Dutchess Civil Service. They're asking us to tweak it in some ways. If they approve that and create the title, we'd be looking for an additional position in the district budget for about $60,000 or so to cover that work or some form of it. Cybersecurity, again, I'm working on the phishing thing. The RIC actually had a deal with a company called NoBefore. NoBefore only does training. You send out the email, people respond, those people receive training elements. The one that I'm working with right now are trying to look into is Co-Fence. It does the same thing, but then also does some pieces where if our really savvy owners identify something as phishing, they click on a button for that email. It then quarantines that email for everybody. So, it gives you a layer of protection on top of the training. It's those kinds of emerging technologies that make the difference. Ransomware and malware is the most frightening one. Ransomware is certainly the most frightening. When these things hit you, there's nowhere to go. You are literally locked down and you pay the ransom and you might get some of your data back. You don't pay the ransom and you have to fight through to get your data back from backups and everything else. We are right now engaged in a threat hunting exercise with CoreBTS. What that means is they've given us some of their very deep tools. We are analyzing... We are analyzing a couple of our very key servers and a sampling of machines from around the District C. Is there already ransomware and malware out there just waiting to jump out? Because that's exactly what happens. It doesn't happen that the ransomware shows up and then it attacks. Some of these actually wait for weeks and months, gather data on how your system works, and then go into effect. So we actually could have stuff on our servers right now that we don't even know about. That's why we're doing the threat hunting. We're pretty well secure, this is just another layer to make sure are we really okay right now. The other budgetary consideration would be, these are two solutions, Umbrella and Checkpoint. Both of these, Umbrella is a Cisco product, it's the kind of thing that looks at all the network traffic and tries to find the bad guys before they get in. Checkpoint is the same kind of thing, different company. Notice the other, or, there's lots of these out there, and every salesman right now is just burning up the phone lines trying to get any business they can because they know it's a hot topic right now. We're not trying to rush into buying one of these solutions, we don't want to. We're lucky in that our BOCs, Dutchess BOCs, works with a group called CSI, they're actually trying both of these right now, so because of them, because they run Dutchess BOCs' servers for us, we kind of have that layer of protection already in place because of them. It's not, I would still like to look at something just for ourselves, because again, it's what you can do in cybersecurity is just create layers of protection for yourself and layers of redundancy that keeps you as safe as you can from the bad actors. Cyber attacks, again, we're creating an incident response plan, so if suddenly my phone goes off with all sorts of Paladin alerts, that's what monitors our servers, what do we do next? Do I literally run to the server room at the high school and pull a plug? Do I call Bobby Calafano and have him shut the VPNs down? What is our process? Who do I then call? Am I calling the insurance company first?
First.
Because they told you. Because if you don't, they won't pay you back. Right? So, and there's actually debates on that, depending on the conference you go to, yes, ignore your superintendent, no, don't ignore it. So it's really kind of fun right now. So we're creating the plans. Just note that a cyber attack, the ransom will be a million, 500,000, 10,000, 4,000. A lot of these guys aren't in it for the money, again, they're in it for the disruption. The cost is all the people you need to bring in to help you recover from the disaster, from whatever they've been able to take control of and get away from you, and how you build that back in. The loss of productivity a time alone. I will tell you, my office at one point said, shut us down for three months, no computers, no networks? Sounds good to me, but we backed off that, so we're not going to do that. Oh, that map, by the way, is actually interesting. The green is not grassland. Those are cyber attacks that, since 2016, there have been 747 cyber attacks on K-12 schools. That number has grown in the last few years. Healthcare and banking have been hit repeatedly. Education's the new market. So the cyber criminals are actually looking at education as a great new market to really disrupt. Okay. So I believe, on this last slide, I just want to point out, you may notice there is a new face on that list of cartoon characters on the far right, next, just to the left of me. Allison Vacarino joined the tech staff in October, I believe, October, November. She is our .8 tech integrator. And you heard Melissa talk about her briefly when she mentioned the tech integrators working with teachers in classrooms. Allison's come on and just done an amazing job getting into classrooms, really focused at the high school, getting people to use the technology that's available to them and to the students and incorporating it well into classrooms. So she's done a phenomenal job, and she's been a great addition. The rest of the staff, hopefully you know by now, they've been here with us for at least a year or two, some of them much longer. So that's our tech services staff. Now pictured here, there are also a few other people. Bobby Goodman is a part-time T at the high school that helps us manage all the Chromebooks. And at the middle school, we have Katrina Phillips, who also helps us manage all the Chromebooks. And then the librarians, I don't know where I'd be without the librarians. And I know you heard about Sharon Foster and I, but every one of them has been helpful in the whole technology rollout throughout the years. Back in the day, when I first began and forced with the librarians, created a technology skills rubric, and that became the beginning for teaching kids and the library tech time. So the shout-out to Sharon, I would extend to all the librarians because they've all been phenomenal resources. So at that point, I would ask if there are any questions.
I have a couple. This camera storage.
Camera storage, yes.
Is that extendable?
Yes, it's scalable. So we can add more, just more memory slots onto it, it is scalable.
Is it like a raid?
It is.
It is a raid? All right. Is it encrypted?
Yes.
Is it archived?
Is it archived?
I mean, 60 days may seem like a lot, but it's not.
No, actually, once the 60 days, it's a rolling, so once the 60 days are up.
Yeah, no, rolling 60 days, but to go back 60 days sometimes isn't enough. You might have to go back 100 days or 120 days.
You get 60 days of storage and then it's.
61 days.
Yeah.
They won't have gone.
So what we do know though is when incidents happen, and we think mainly about the high school, the middle school, when incidents happen, the first thing that people do is they go to the cameras and they can download the video. With this new system, we actually changed software also, we went from the Vigilon system. It was good, but it was getting dated and we needed to update the software, which would have been a cost anyways. So we actually looked at something called Milestone. And my team actually went up to Albany to a hospital where they used the Milestone software to preview it and see what they thought. We talked to a couple of their industry professionals. It's really good software. And it has some nice features like a smart search. So if I know an incident happened in the parking lot at this car at this time, I can highlight that car and then the system will actually look for any movement in that particular zone over whatever span it'll look for. So it'll speed up the processing time for the people who use the software. But you do have to find the incident within 60 days. If it's after 60 days, no, it's gone.
Okay, independent backup, data backup? Does that go to the same storage?
No, it'll be a separate storage unit, we want to keep them separate. It'll be a separate storage unit.
Then you have two network attached storage systems to maintain. I don't, why can't it be the same one?
It could be, except that video storage is very different than active storage. So the video server that we're buying was designed.
But those are files, they're files, right?
They are files, they're both file servers.
They're both files, I mean, they can both go to that, and if it's a true raid, you can swap in and out drives.
Yes. The software that's actually driving the video server is specific to video storage. If you're asking me, could we then layer on the file backups?
Yes.
Software to use that to access that same storage? That is a question beyond my capabilities, and I'm quite sure the answer is yes. Honestly though, when I sit and I think about it from.
Thinking of maintenance, you know, instead of maintaining two different systems, maintaining one might be easier.
It might be. Honestly, in the conversation we've been having, so we're working with Autonecabling on the video server, and we're working with CoreBTS on the file server, if you will. There really was this implication that we should keep them separate, but I will ask the direct question. We're actually meeting with, we have a phone call with Autonec tomorrow.
And as, I know we off-site data, but as things get, I mean, camera stuff for instance, why couldn't that have been off-sided as well?
There is that option. There's, we looked at a company called Verkata, and we could actually back up to the cloud as well. We do have that with the file server, we do have the video storage, we could do all that. There are costs associated with that to then go to cloud storage as well. My thought with the video storage is we want, again, it's a 60-day that we have, it's here. Could we archive it to the cloud and keep it forever for two, three years? Yes, we could. We haven't looked at that because the cost already felt a little daunting.
Okay, I'm just curious if.
Yeah, in my mind, it's a balance of cost versus functionality.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome, yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
Do you have something?
No, I just was wondering what he did all day. Now, he's, I will say that the communication with technology in this era of cyber attacks and as well as the instructional side is key, and Rick has been communicating non-stop, and it really works. There's a lot there to think about. It's mind-boggling.
Okay, next we'll have a rollover budget by Linda Steiberg.
All right, so, thank you and good evening. So this is our rollover budget presentation. It is the first presentation that we give for the budget, and it really is just that, it's the rollover. We haven't changed anything for our supplies, contractual, BOCs. We're assuming that everything next year will be the same as it is this year. We've only shown increases for salaries and benefits. And then in the next few weeks, we'll be looking at the budget requests from our administrators to determine how we should be changing the budget for the supplies, contractual, and BOCs expenses. So every year we have to really look at where we are with our current salaries and our benefits because we are contractually obligated to pay our salaries and the benefits that come along with it. We do make adjustments every year, usually based on attrition. We'll look at our programs to see if there's any cuts that we can make based on retirement. But when we do the rollover budget, we're assuming that everyone that's here now will be here next year. After we look at the rollover, then we figure in what we estimate for state aid. We should be getting information from the governor's proposal soon, and I'll also have more information so I can calculate the tax cap within the next few weeks. We'll look at what our revenues will be, and then we have to determine what our budget gap is. The budget gap is the difference between our expenses and our revenues. Our budget has to be balanced, so that means the expenses and the revenues have to equal one another. So when we determine what the budget gap is, what that difference is, we have to determine how we fill that in. And we could either do that through fund balance, by cutting expenses, trying to increase revenues, whatever works for us. And usually, we have to look at all three things. Every year we've had to use some of our fund balance to fill in the budget gap, and we've also had to cut back on spending too. All right. So whenever we build a budget, we always want to make sure that we have the budget that's going to ensure that we're preserving our programs or even enhancing them for our students, but we also have to be mindful of our taxpayers and the financial obligations that the district itself has. With the tax cap, unfortunately, we're billing budgets based on revenues, not always on So every year we have some challenges for our budget. This year, I'm expecting that our tax cap will come in at less than 2%. The board may remember that the 2% cap is actually for just one part of the calculation of the tax cap, but early projections show that this change in CPI, which is the Consumer Price Index for last year, was about 1.7%. So that's probably the number that we can use for that part of our calculation. When I did a preliminary calculation based on the information that we know, the tax cap came in exactly at 1.7% for us. So that's a challenge. Just having the cap itself is a challenge, but when we're below the 2%, it is harder for us. We know that the rate for the teachers' retirement system is increasing. In the current year, we're paying about 8.8% of our teacher and administrator salaries for their pension. Next year, we'll have to pay somewhere between 9.5% and 10.5%. We don't have the information yet for the other retirement system, which is for the non-certified staff, but I expect that that might increase a little bit too. And also, this year we have some things, some new employees that we have to move into the general fund budget. You may remember that when we added the three new health, mental health professionals, we used some rollover money from one of the federal grants, but that was a one-time funding source. So for 2020, 21, we have to move those employees into the general fund. We also have two collective bargaining agreements that expire this year. We don't have the information yet on what those salaries will be or what those increases are. So in our budget, we just have estimates. I'll also add, we do have to consider the, there's a new teacher at North Park that we added because of class size, so that's new to the budget too. And in the rollover budget, I did make a consideration for a new data privacy person. All right. So.
We have to.
Yeah. Whenever I do the rollover, the last few years I've been showing information on the health insurance cost, just because this is a good time to look at that. Our health insurance is our single, well, next to payroll, it's our single largest expense. It's been increasing as a total percentage of the entire budget over the last 15 years. In the last 10 years, it's increased from 12% of our total budget to almost 20%, so just over 18. So we do have, we belong to D. Hic, we're actually one of the founding school districts for D. Hic, which is the local health insurance consortium. We offer two plans through D. Hic, and we're expecting that for next year, the rates might be a little bit lower than we've seen in the past. So in the rollover, I assumed a 5% increase. But you can see that the increase from the prior year, the very last line, is 6.5%. And that's because we make assumptions for people that are retiring, because when they retire, they're still eligible to have health insurance. So every year, we're showing more and more people with health insurance. And this is just a chart I upkeep to show the changes in the health insurance as a total percentage of the expenditures. Again, you can see it's risen from 12% to nearly 20%. At the bottom of the page is the information on the cost for a plan. And that's the total cost, it's the employees and the retirees share plus the district share. But the most expensive plan is the Alt PPO family plan, which costs $33,000 this year. And the least expensive would be for the Alt, or the EPO 20 plan, individual plan, which is about $12,000. And this table just shows how many people were insured. It's broken down between the bargaining units, but also shows the differences in the active employees and the retirees. So overall, we insure 946 people and their families, 530 are active employees, and 416 are retirees. Most of the people are in the PPO plan, which is the more expensive plan, but every year we do see more people moving over to the EPO 20 plan. Okay, so here's the information about the actual rollover. With the information, like I said, based on who we have employed today, if, and the assumptions that we made for the salary increases for next year, the rollover budget is 3.88% increase, or 3.8 million dollar increase. Now again, this is not the final budget, we have a lot of work to do, because like I said earlier, we haven't even considered the request from the administrators yet for their contractual, their supplies, and the BOCs expenses. So with the tax cap that I'm anticipating, the 1.7%, that would just be about a 1.1 million dollar increase. So depending on how we are with our state aid, we do have a lot of work to do with our budget before we get it to a point where we're ready to make a recommendation. On this page, I just show the difference, or comparing the rollover to the 1920 adopted budget. So like I said, obviously, there's no, it's showing no increase in the areas where we're not projecting yet, just in the salaries and the benefits. So normally, I would present this rollover budget at the second meeting in January, but we have our financial advisor coming. Chuck Bastian works for Bernard Donigan Incorporated. They've been our financial advisor for longer than I've worked here, and a couple of years ago, they did a long-range plan for us and presented it at the board retreat. They've updated that, and they'll be presenting that here at the public meeting, at the January 23rd meeting. And Chuck will also be talking about our debt service, because we had started that conversation with the district leadership team. He's going to show us some options for what we can do if we have a May 2021 vote and what it would look like for our budget.
And Linda, we might as well say it now, but Linda was sharing when we were talking today about Chuck coming to do the long-range planning, financial planning. The last time we did it, we did it in a retreat. And for those of you who were here, you remember, it's a very somber, rude awakening. And so that was in a retreat setting, so we need to make sure that when we do our, this in public setting, we prepare the board and we prepare the public that, you know, when you look at the prospect of a long-range financial plan for a district, it's a very dire picture.
Yeah. So when BPD creates that, they're very conservative in that they, they're assuming that we're keeping everything the same as we have it right now, and that as people retire, we're replacing them fully, that if we've had large increases in our supplies or contractual in the past, that we'll continue to do that. So they're looking really at the worst-case scenario. So they're looking really at the worst-case scenario, and they do it that way just to give us kind of a reminder that when we are budgeting, that we have to be mindful of that potential financial cliff that we could all face because of the tax cap. Jason Schwartz is actually our assigned financial advisor. I've been talking to him this week, because he's the one that's actually creating the long-range plan for us. And I asked him about his other school districts, and he said every district shows basically that they become insolvent within five years by the way that they do their plan, but no school district has ever met that. They're all able to make, yeah.
Right. That'd be public, just not in a retreat today.
Yeah, so.
Forward to that.
Yeah. So every year, we have to show the program and its three components, or the budget and its three components, the program, admin, and capital. Right now, with the rollover, we're showing that the admin is less than 10%. But you may remember, we also have the BOCs capital project, because this is the rollover. We don't have that information in this budget yet. Even though that's a capital project, it's a capital project for BOCs. For us, it's an administrative cost. So because it's $1.5 million is our share for this coming year, I expect that number for the admin portion may go over 10%. So listed here are all the dates related to the budget. Like I said earlier, at the next meeting, Bernie Donigan's office will be here to present the long-range plan and to talk about debt service. On February 13th, I'll have a budget update, which will have more information incorporated into it with all of the administrator requests, and we may have some changes by then, too. February 27th is when I present the tax cap calculation, the presentation. That's due to the state by March 1st. George will present on the bus proposition on March 12th. And then we have other dates that are just updates of the budget. The board adopts the budget officially on April 30th. And then after that, we don't change the budget at all, but we have a couple of presentations before the public votes on it on May 19th. So I don't have anything else at this time, but I'd be happy to answer any questions or have a discussion.
Any questions?
Is that, like, on that data privacy?
Yeah.
Officer, has anyone looked into, like, shared services?
Yeah.
Because the amount of data in our district is small.
Yes, yes. Well, yeah. I'm really a proponent of sharing services when we can, and so is the superintendent. We just had a meeting the other day with BOCs, and the superintendent did inquire about the possibility of sharing that. So we're exploring all of our options for that. But for the rollover budget, I did add that into salaries, though. That's where it is right now.
And we let BOCs know that we would need to know that in time to prepare the budget, but, you know, it's conceivable we could share this service with two other districts, you know, as long as they're not huge districts. But we're surrounded by a lot of small districts, and the work is replicable work. So we're hopeful that, you know, they can do something along those lines. That would be great.
Right. Even collectively, in the computing world, the amount of data at the county level is still small, right?
Yeah.
For a person, it seems daunting, but for a computer, it's small, right? Compared to big corporations that process, you know, like the government processes, hundreds of millions of people worth of data, right? That's a lot of data. Here, it's small. So having shared services is probably the better way to go.
That could really help us out a lot. We're hopeful they're going to come back.
Yeah. I feel overwhelmed by our data. It's not small to me.
Right. But for a person, it is, but for a data, for a computer, it's tight.
Yeah. And when we share services to BOCs, part of it may be aidable, so that's attractive, too.
I was just going to add that, you know, we're trying to get clarification. Up until this point, we've been told that it must be an employee of the district. And so we're trying to clarify if that's correct or not. Some districts have asked, could it be a BOCs person? And we're waiting for clarification.
Okay, yeah, because it's, you know, it's an interesting thing, because you have to have a data privacy officer. And the other clarification I would want to know is, so even if we did a shared services, could we make, you know, Linda the data privacy officer who oversees? So we're trying to look at every angle for that purpose, so, yeah. Are there more questions?
I just had one question in reference to the BOCs, the payment for the capital project of BOCs.
Yes.
Is that exempt from the tax cap calculation?
Yes.
Okay.
So, well, no, it's not, it has to be part of the calculation. I'm sorry. It's not an exemption to it.
It's not an exemption?
No, no.
Okay.
But we may remember that-
Remember the governor vetoed that?
Yeah, yeah. You may remember that last year, we received some additional aid from 15 years ago. It was $1.2 million. It was aid for special ed students that we had claimed, I think, in 2008, '09, for, you know, a few years prior to that. We received all of it last year, and right now, it's in fund balance. And we had determined then that we would save that to use towards the BOCs capital project this year. It's not the full amount, but it's most of it.
Right.
Yeah.
But if it's got to be within the 2%?
All right, so that would be like an appropriation of fund balance. So in a way, we could, we don't have to have that considered in the tax cap.
Okay.
I did want to point out, because, just prime the pump a little, too, with Chuck coming next time to talk about the debt service. So this is a follow-up to the conversation of planning the next capital project and keeping our debt level, debt service relatively level. Linda and I simultaneously are working with Elliot Sheldon and have a timeline of what he will present to the board this spring priorities. So originally, we were anticipating a new updated building condition survey, but then the state said, no, we can't have them all done at the same time. We need to blah, blah, blah. So Elliot has been working on our DRIP. That's our district renovation improvement plan. That's the small things that are managed within his budget. He's also met with all of the principals to develop a capital project wish list, because some of the things that a building may determine they need may fit into a category of a capital project that never is under the purview of a building condition survey. So the building, so for example, the science labs weren't, never going to be part of a building condition survey. So he'll have the results of his DRIP, his capital project, from the schools and our other outlined buildings, transportation. And then in lieu of the updated building condition survey, we're mandated to do a visual inspection, a self-visual inspection. He's going to do the visual inspection in March, and we'll be meeting with him throughout so that in April, we have asked him to give an assessment of what a priority listing for a next capital project, because it's one thing to look at the, at the last DLT, we looked at the old, the most recent building condition survey, and really, that group can't determine that type of work. They can weigh in once we decide where we want to go based on somebody looking at all of the relevant data. So for example, the life expectancy of a roof on the building condition survey may say two years, but the expertise of the facilities department may say, yeah, but that heating system, or finishing the heating system, remember, we only did the HVAC in three of the six schools, and we really need to rely on the expertise of the facilities department to say, you can patch a roof, but we can't open a school without heat, or we can't open a school without a septic system. So you can't, in a vacuum, look at a building condition survey as a layperson and say that you could come up with a priority list for what is the most egregious needs of the district for the next capital project. So we've tasked Elliot and his team to do that. So what the timeline will look like, you're going to get a debt service presentation at the next meeting, and then in April, you will receive a report from the facilities department outlining a recommendation for the next capital project. Certainly, it's a conversation, it's a dialogue, but we need to start with our facilities department first weighing in to help shape the next project.
Yeah. Could I add one more thing about the debt service presentation? Will, there'll be two scenarios for the board to consider. One will be if we leave our local share of debt service. That's the difference between what we pay in debt for our bond payments and what we receive in aid every year. It's currently at a higher amount than it had been in the past. It's about $1.8 million. We had agreed to that when we had the capital project vote, that we would have two years where we went over our normal range of 1.56. So Chuck is going to show two scenarios for a May 2021 vote. How much could we have for the vote if we stay at the 1.8 where we are now, or if we go back down to 1.56 where we had been in the past? So there'll be a lot for the board to consider.
Think about it.
Are there any other budget questions?
No. Thank you, Linda.
Thank you.
Thanks, Linda.
So at this time, can I have a motion for public participation?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. If you would like to address the board, please come to the microphone and state your name. Seeing none, public participation is now closed. For non-to-board discussion, subcommittee reports?
The policy committee met last night?
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Tuesday. Oh.
Last Tuesday? So we're plugging away at our goal to hit all, what are they, 300 in, how many policies? Jay?
Over 300. Over 300 policies. So I think we covered 24 on Tuesday, didn't we?
We did.
So amazing.
Making headway.
And the special ed committee met today. Last year, we had the HPTA, and they had issued concerns. We had a follow-up meeting with them today, and the increase in the mental health employees, they feel is making a difference in the district. So up for that. Is there any other reports?
I can just say that the Dutchess County School Board Association met last Thursday, and we had Stuart Waxman, who we all know, do a presentation on negotiation, teachers negotiate, primarily trends on teacher negotiations. When the board members review their emails next, they'll see that I've put, forwarded to you a copy of the presentation, the handout that he made available at the meeting, so you've got it for reference. I won't say there was anything particularly new in it, but it's kind of good to have a little refresher on, you know, on how the process works. And one thing that I learned is that here in Hyde Park, we are one of the few school districts where the board is involved, actively involved in the negotiation process. Most school districts, it is done primarily by the superintendent and then brought to the board after the fact, so. And Stu is not an advocate for that process that we're in, but admits that it works well for us here in the district and believes that it is beneficial for the relationship that we have with the unions of which we work with, so. And the next meeting is February 5th. And I also say that as part of being on the Dutchess County School Board Association, I'm also now serving on the school advisory, safety advisory council, which meets bimonthly to discuss safety issues with first responders and law enforcement in the area as well. So I will be reporting on anything I learn there as well.
Any other reports?
Not a report, but I forgot to mention this when Melissa was giving hers, just please thank whoever made all the delicious treats, and I'm sure if they were here, maybe they left a, please extend our thanks for that.
Brownies are good.
Yeah, the banana bear was really good.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on. Can I have a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to say something about the disposal of items, and this is from the library, that there's an itemized list there, but the overall total just looks really high. And just for anyone on the board or the public to know that the average age of these resources is 1980, or from 1980, and there's at least 40 or more resources from 1948 or earlier. So just to know that it may seem like a high value, but, you know, not, that it's appropriate weeding that happens in a library, just for people to know.
Also, you will notice under the personnel matters section that we are moving Linda to assistant superintendent for business. A long time ago in the district, we moved to just a business person. That is when we had two assistant superintendents and a superintendent, and we've been going that way with two less and increased responsibilities to the superintendent and the deputy superintendent. But as Linda has increased and gotten her certifications and now has the education for it, she's been taking on more and more responsibilities. This is the board recognizing that these oversight responsibilities she is taking on, taking the burden off the other administrators. And also, we believe this was bringing stability to the district and for the long range. So, thank you very much.
Can I say something? Yeah, I just really appreciate the support from the board and Greer and Aviva. There really isn't any other place I'd rather be. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations on your degree.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? Posed. Motion carries. Okay, can I have a motion for 11.1, special education placements?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Can I have a motion for 11.2, first consideration of policies?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'll just jump in here to add, the reason why this is separate in this way is because we just want a clarification of language here about what would happen if there was an appeal at the board level, just so it's clear to anyone in future who wants to appeal.
Okay, Jay is pointing out that this is first consideration and adoption.
Right.
So there won't be a second reading. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
For policy 0115.
Yes.
I second.
No. Okay. Did I didn't?
We didn't?
Okay.
I did.
Yeah, I thought I did.
I did the, I second the, and I second.
And you seconded. We're on the next one now.
Yeah, I second the reading for 11.3.
Sorry, who motions?
Who did the motion?
I did.
And then Perry did. They're all good?
Yes.
All those in favor? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 11.3, the 2020-21 budget development calendar?
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 11.4, vendor abilities first, 2019-2020?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
That one policy out.
Motion carries.
I think they separated.
Can I have a motion for 11.5, vendor Grace Andros, lifeguard?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 11.6, vendor Laura Stanford, lifeguard?
Can I have a motion for 11.6, vendor Laura Stanford, lifeguard?
So moved. Second.
Excuse me?
Time out.
You're off on the number.
Okay, all right, thank you. Your numbers are off. It was because 11.2 was a first consideration and adoption of policy.
No, 11.2 was policy 10115. I'm going off my list here.
Right, exactly.
So we are off.
And then it was first consideration and adoption of that policy.
It was 11.3.
Who's on first?
11.3.
There's two. 11.2 and 11.3.
Hold it. We're going back. We have to do 11.2.
11.2 was the one policy, 11.3 was all of the other ones.
Consideration and adoption of that policy.
Right.
Okay, and then 11.3 is first consideration.
That's not what it has in there. Because the list of policies is the whole list of things.
So we do have to have a vote on the policy 115-R update.
It's the one.
Yeah, 11.2.
11.2.
We skipped over that one.
So can I have a motion?
So moved.
His list wasn't updated for that one policy.
That was the one Aviva talked about.
Yeah.
We skipped over the first consideration.
Okay. I just want to make sure that going forward, that what you're saying, because you're reading, when you're saying vendor abilities first, your number was off. I just want to make sure that we're correct.
Yes. But we still have to vote. I did first consideration of policies.
Correct.
So we still need to vote for policy 115-R.
We voted for that one. We didn't do the next one.
So we didn't do first consideration of policies.
What'd you hear? Help me out here.
Okay. I don't want you hurt. Where are we at?
So for 11.2, policy 115R, I have-
That was the one I-
That Doug moved. And Perry seconded.
Correct.
Yep.
For first consideration of the list of policies, I have that Perry moved and Carl seconded.
I missed that one. Okay, my bad.
And then for the budget development calendar, which is where we are.
But we didn't really vote for one. We only voted for one.
No, we did, we did that one. It's Perry and Carl.
Yep.
I'm just saying, there's two items on the agenda, and we only did one vote.
Two items on the agenda.
What I did, special education placement, first consideration of policies, as I read them out, and budget development calendar, vendor abilities first, vendor Grace Andros, and we were on vendors, Lauren Sanford. I did not speak out policy 115-R. She might have talked to it, but it isn't what I said, and it isn't what we voted on.
Okay. All right.
So we have to have, well, first, let's finish up the Lauren Sanford, because I do have a motion and a second, and we haven't voted.
Okay.
That's the 11.7.
11.7.
What was the motion?
I moved.
I second.
Okay, all those in favor of 11.7? Motion carries. Let's go back to 11.2, policy 115-R update.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? This is the one that is first and second consideration.
Right.
All those in favor? Motion carries. Okay, on to 11.8, vendor energy cap.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 11.9, vendor R O B I A language, A Fang?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 11.10, vendor R O B I A language, D Fang?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 11.11, vendor ISAMARS speech and language pathology?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for second public participation?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. If anybody would like to address the board? Seeing none, public participation is now closed. There is no other matters deemed necessary by the board. However, we do have to go into a second executive session. And can I have a motion to assign the clerk pro temp to Denise Berry?
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
At no additional compensation. Just make sure enough.
Can I have a motion going into second executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Time limit? Can we say that we're going to have a time limit on this executive session?
Three hours, not a minute more.
And you may want to indicate, if you can or can't, whether or not there'll be action taken at the end, then, sometimes.
I do not believe we will have action taken at the end of this executive session. Okay, all those in favor? Motion carries. We're now in second executive session. Are you ready?
What do I do? I thought you were doing it.
Jeff's going to do it.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Nice going.
Who first, who second? I'm Go Secretary.
Take a pick. We're not going to fight.
Take a pick. We don't care.
Perry first, I'm second.
So right here, you put-
And everybody but you.
And Mike.
Yeah.